Again, I think I'll turn, thanks, town planning board meeting for April seventeenth. Say if we could stand for the flag of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Order of business for us is our review of our minutes from the last meeting on March twentieth. There have been some, I think, just submitted corrections. Thank you, John, for that. And you can review them also with any other divisions, corrections, additions, solutions. Very nice, wanted to improve as presented.
I'll make the mention.
On second. And all in favor?
Hi.
Any post? Motion carries.
Hi.
Okay, first, on our agenda this evening, Mr. Palladino, Heritage Hill Site Plan Review. This is a preliminary site plan review for a project located at thirty-one forty-nine Sweet Road. Text van number zero one eight dash zero four, schedule fifteen dash one. Dan, are you gonna be presenting your?
Yeah, and also I want to introduce John Seigerwald, who's my partner from the Seigerwald, so both of us can answer questions as well. Is it time? Okay, great, so we all have the maps in front of you. You know, we talked about the project.
I'm Sam.
Yeah, oh, sure.
Yeah. And so try to.
Yeah. So the, the post. Uh, well, yeah, oh, so, okay, oh, put the, I don't think I can flip it there, though.
I'll stand behind you.
Okay, you're gonna hold it that whole time? The fingers behind the scene.
Well. Could you turn this this way a little as well?
Okay, okay. So, the proposal, this is the existing heritage hill right here. And the proposal is to build a ten thousand square foot facility here, employee only facility. Processing here, beef and pork. When I say processing, it's not slaughter, it's, we get sides of the beef and pork back from the USDA butcher. And there will smoke, make sausages, have commercial smokers, have dry aging chamber for beef sides. And any questions on all of that stuff, Jeff, you know, you'll jump in on any of that. Basically, anything, if you've ever been to Leon's Tiger Woods, that's what we'll be doing here. And, but we'll be using beef from our farm. And then hopefully, the goal of the business, I put a business, I think you all got the kind of the presentation back that we shared. Did you get copies of that? Talked about what the business was, okay. So the goal is to be able to not only have a deli case onsite in our existing structure, but to be able to do subscription boxes, as well as wholesale to retail outlets like Wegmans, Costco, BJ's, whatever, you know, all of them that we can get into. And then we're really excited to do a part that's gonna be going to school districts, so, and we're looking at some connections downstate as well, so to be able to get ground beef and hot dogs into school districts across New York. It's easier said than done, but it's one of the objectives we have from the project. And when we talk to egg and markets, they struggled having, being able to prove traceability, so we'll be able to prove traceability from the animal being raised in New York State to being slaughtered in New York State, processed in New York State and sold, everything happens within the state's borders. So, and our vision afterwards is to pasture the other side of the Sweet Road to create, to increase our herd, be for potentially with another two hundred beefers. And then buy from other local farms, having like a set feeding standard and consistency with meats. And there's other farms that wanna convert to raising beef or hogs for the operation as we grow, that come from there. We'll also add fifty hogs down in our packed area at the woods next in charge of that, so. That's, uh, that's the intention, so leave it there. Just pick your questions.
What are the hours of operation for the processing plant?
Initially, we're gonna look at at standard, single shift. As demand grows, we would anticipate we'd go into multiple shifts. Yeah, USDA plant requires a USDA inspector onsite, or at least having, they have access to us anytime we're processing. Yep, and so their standard hours are seven till three thirty, seven to three thirty. Anything outside those hours requires overtime pay, which we would then have to compensate the USDA for that. The standard hours are seven to three thirty, but again.
Not in the regular hours, only in.
Overtime you definitely, yeah.
And, yeah, and as demand grows, if we would have to expand that, we certainly, we would have the ability to produce whenever.
And trucking in and trucking out? Describe, I mean, how big are the trucks that are bringing in the?
So we, I have a, so I have a truck of our own, a box truck, a refrigerator box truck, and that's what we would pick up our beef and pork from the butcher.
Big enough.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's, it's just a like sixteen foot truck. Yeah. So we have a loading dock here for, you know, we have tractor trailers come in now for their food distributors and stuff like that, so the whole, it's set up to have a central loading dock right here. So they'll come in, load, unload. The nice part about this business, that part and everything like that, that all happens when the retail side of Heritage Hill is asleep. So, you know, this, really during the week and during the day, initially like seven to three, like we want, we'll have the ability to expand shifts if we need to, if we're blessed with that kind of business, but still, it would be during the week, nothing on the weekend, so it's a nice symbiotic. I'm not too worried about the trucks. I don't think we'll have a delivery, probably it would be like everyday type of thing, you know.
Definitely would be.
Delivery in, delivery out.
And they would be within the normal, normal business hours, for sure.
Yeah, so, so the finished product, is it stored there? Yes. Like you say, refrigeration or freezing.
Correct.
So when you get into the, you know, schools or restaurants or whatever, that would be delivered from that location?
Yeah, so I'm talking, Grow NYC is developing a huge hub, and we're trying to get a lot of information out there on it, and it's down in Queens at the Hunts Point Market. And they'll hub it, so they'll actually be, so you can take a whole truckload down there, and then they get it out to the school's food system. The reality of being able to serve every school district in New York State, a lot of them buy individually, so you gotta drive to Cincinnatus and stuff like that. Unless you have a solution for that type, you're probably not gonna serve those, it's probably gonna be your major metropolitan areas that you can serve like that, but it's a good start.
You're not gonna have delivery trucks.
No, no, you, and any of the subscription would be the typical FedEx or UPS that comes in every day to our place anyways at the set time. So, there'll be increased truck traffic, but I don't think it's, you know, that significant.
Just curious, because I know that there's limited, but where do you currently or intend to send them for, for USDA?
So, gold medal, we're talking with gold medal processing in Rome, they're gonna be adding beef facility, and so Jeff and I have both gone out and met with them. They're actually, Jeff is using them as a USDA consultant for the project, so they're already hooked into the project. And we would set up these butcher appointments well ahead of time. And I've talked to, you know, Mike Albini, so he's using the one down at Oniana, so I'm gonna talk to them a bit. We currently use Tabor, we use Kelly Meats up in Tabor. But the gold medal, they took us through their whole operation and, you know, they're not the sexiest places to go visit, and this was really nice, like it was, you know, I mean, you could walk, I mean, it was just, it's all a well-run operation, that's, I kind of felt like, okay, put that facility in, because we wanna be, that's where we wanna be using the processing, and plus it's Rome, it's not that bad.
No, yeah.
So you're, one of the things I appreciate about what you've done up there is it's very, it's a word I'm looking for, public oriented, so you wanna see how a farm brewery runs, you get to see that when you go up there. Will that be the same sort of operation here? Or will we be able to see, you know, how the farm works?
Um, you have the interior layout on there. Before we get to the interior layout, when I pasture the other side of the road, I want that to be like, just a state-of-the-art beef facility, like you're gonna drive up Sweet Road, you're gonna see these cattle up in the pastures, and, you know, everything, the way they're fed, they're gonna go research the fuck out of it. Even Dan Diamond, you know, my partner at the crop farm, we're talking in how, you know, we can do this together and really just have a really good beef operation. So, if you look at the subscription box business or these, most people are just marketers and stuff. This is kind of game-changing in that we will actually have the production of the beef and the animals, some of it, right, most of it, and then, you know, we can only grow so much, so we're gonna have to rely on other farms as that growth comes up, people could come on board with it. And then, I talked, the county specifically asked, inside the facility, we build it, so the whole facility will be under, this is like scanning, you know, you gotta have key codes to get in and everything like that, so employees only, everything like that, you gotta have the netting, all the things you would expect of a USDA fact. But we'll have the ability to take people that are involved, or if you have community tours or egg organization tours, and it's being designed so you can walk through, there'll be a glass wall for everything that Jeff's doing in the smoking facility and everything, so you're gonna be able to see all of that. And there will be a dry age chamber that you can see from the outside, kind of like, you know, if you're walking in New York City, those steak houses, we're gonna have one of those, so you can get those dry aged steaks. And Jeff's established a lot of connections with restaurants, so we're hoping a lot of the area restaurants pick this as their meat source to serve, so. A lot of lofty goals with it, but they're attainable. And, you know, it also brings us to your point, Kevin, back to more of what Dad and Grandpa did and everything like that, legitimate, you know, so I'm really excited about the effort.
So, on one hand, you just said that the operation would be mostly seven to three thirty.
Yeah.
Before most of your other activity takes place. And, but, for tours and so on, so, but usually like school tours, or if somebody's there earlier, they could.
Farm Bureau.
Go through.
Yeah. During, when it's open.
During the seven to three.
Yeah, 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 when it's open, yeah, no, there's not gonna be any, you can't let people, you can't let people in there.
Right, no, but I didn't know, like they're, like the walk through, the walk by the windows, look in, like, that part, but they still walk through.
Yeah, it's.
By appointment, I mean.
Yeah, by appointment, yeah, exactly, yeah, so you get your guided through and then back out, it literally. Let me just flip to show you how. This here, if you. Basically, that's this walkway here, so you have a controlled entrance receptionist, everybody has to be registered, everything like that. If you did, they'd have to get netted, put their smocks on, everything like that, like you do at any type of facility tour, walk through here, up here, to tour that and back out, not going into any of the production areas or anything like that, it's a hallway design. And it's not a huge part of it, but like, for instance, when I was talking to like Dave Knapp about it, and when it was presented, you know, it's been presented to, you know, as a concept to Ryan and others, and that's something they really loved about it, because they really wanna think of this as could be like a flagship of, you know, people to see on a dog county agriculture, so.
And actually see it in action.
Yes, it's real, like, yeah, you know, you could, that part is important, and I realize you need up to control for it and everything like that, but it's not, it's not Saturday at two o'clock when everybody's out, you know, then coming into the beef facility and wandering around, using bathrooms, nothing. You gotta be guided through with an employee only.
And Dan, what's the benefit of having it, opposed to having a standalone to have it attached to the restaurant?
Um, another important part of this is, you know, we've spent five years, we've developed, I feel, a pretty strong brand, and we've been approached for distribution, so we're about ready to sign for that, but I don't, we don't have enough space to can our beer, we have a mobile canner come in, and it's, it's expensive for one, and two, you can't control the timing. So if I'm gonna can four beers, I have to tie up four tanks until the last beer's ready, at, you know, and so if you have your own canning, I could be like, okay, this beer's ready, I can can KBL right now, and so in this part right here, we're going to have an automated, really cool canning line, that, you know, de-palatizes the cans, puts the pack tags on, two people can run it, and we can continue, and we can go broader into distribution with the beers in Central New York, that's our focus is, you know.
And you could do it in that building with what you're doing?
Yeah, we got, we went through the USDA consultant on it, it's a separate area, it's right here, that allows us to do that, as well as, you know, the organization of trucks coming in and out and having a real loading dock, that's, that's both, so that's going in and out right there, you know, and you can't beat that, so having the two buildings attached gives you a lot of efficiencies. We're gonna do ground source heat pumps, so we're gonna tie that into this facility, we're gonna do solar across all of the roofs, and so the whole roof's gonna be covered front to back, and so all that goes into one central utility, same thing with the water, same use of the water, same disposal of the water, hopefully some way. Initially, the counties agreed to our concept of capturing the waste and then proving out the septic field, so that's progressed actually since last one, very quickly, so.
Is that gonna give you some room to remodel your existing building?
I mean, um, just the only remodel that I intend to do is to add deli case, so you guys can come up and buy sausages and stuff like that during the business hours. So I'll be able to move some tanks around and stuff like that, the plumbing's all staying the same, but I can move tanks around, and it allows us, another cool part of the building is, because remember, right now I have that silver barn that I'm storing tractors in and stuff like that, I've had to buy refrigeration trailers to store beer in, like, I've got another freight, all that goes away. This building will have a full basement, and down there, the tractors will be, will be able to store packaging, everything like that, you'll have an elevator raising it up, so everything can be stored downstairs, and all that stuff that you see outside now, the, it's not my favorite, goes away, so it's just a nice clean facility. The only thing external to the building would be the dumpster right there, and that'll be one of those covered ones that you walk out on top of, so. So pretty excited about that, because the tractors will have a home, the, you know, all the storage of stuff will have, be able to be down there. So it's gonna function as, you know, replacement for the concept barn, too. Concept barn is basically, like, here, right now. It's basically replacing that, and it actually gives me more parking, because the concept barn's too tight to the roads, I can't get a full, you know.
Are you replacing the quants barn?
Yeah, it's coming, it's being tared down.
Relocating it, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, as to whether that goes down to Dan Diamond's, or we relocate it on the home farm, don't know yet, but it'll definitely be reused, so. I did, I know this was a concern for everybody, and I wanna just tell you too, I know parking has come up multiple times. We just had a nice tip case study, because this weekend was busy, busier than it was any week last year. And everybody was safely parked, you know, either the overflow or here. We gained, like I said, more parking, total parking spaces when this done, including the overflow is three hundred and sixty-seven, a hundred and thirty-five over here. This is now gonna be paved, we're gonna pave the parking lot, and when it's time, Sean's gonna get the approval through the county, but to widen this, the entrance up, the exit's fine, but the entrance could use to be a little bit wider coming in, so we wanna put the curving, you know, so it guides things in, so he's, you know, gonna put a plan together for that, so we'd like to have, but that'll be after the building's built and everything to have that paved. Paved to about, paved to about right here, and then these is, this is Millings, you see, I have them up there right now to be able to do this, so that would just be rolled Millings there. Let's look at here to be grass, and it's perfect, because when it's raining, not that many people come to Heritage Hill, they come when it's sunny, and this is well-drained and stuff, so I've been able to park all my overflow over here. That incident last year, when somebody, a couple people were lazy and they parked on the road, I since put a sign here that says absolutely no parking on the road, go to overflow, and I've never had a single car park on the road, they didn't need to park on the road, there was overflow parking, they just didn't do it. So I've not had any incident like that, and I have signs pointing them where to go. We put extra lighting in, I put a sign mock-up, the sign's gonna be a little bit bigger than ours right now, but the exact same size as Holbrook's across the street, so we can stay, whatever we're gonna call Miko, Heritage Hill and Palladino Farms, all on one sign. And we got light poles there, there'll be lights on the front and back of the building for these parts. Employee parking is labeled here, but it's actually both of these, so this will give me twenty-six employee parking spots versus what I have about sixteen now, so that takes care of the, keeping in mind that the employees that are here during production during the week and during the day are gonna be gone when most, majority of my employees come in, so twenty-six employee parking spots is plenty for me.
How many employees on your side? It'd be initially ten to twelve.
Cool aspect there, we're talking with Culbysville University, they've got a new certificate program for meat processing, so we wanted to kind of set up like a funnel for like internships and maybe use them as a source for employees, it'd be good jobs, you know, we're gonna have, you know, nice range of benefits, good, good pay. This right here?
Yes.
Wait, so what, so what's the distance, is thirty feet from the center line, is that?
Now it's on the, it's on your site plan, right, we live in this right here.
Oh. Which, which is the?
Yeah, that right there.
So while we're talking about parking, because there's a number of things that John and I have reviewed, I know that some comments were sent to you. So, if, I think you're, you're telling us that some of the parking is going here. So we'll need to have that marked on the plan.
Okay.
I'm taking some notes here.
Yeah.
As we go on as well.
Okay.
You can mark on your own plan, you can bring that with you, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Help you remember stuff.
Yep.
And, you know, but some of it is still maybe going to be gravel or other materials.
Millions.
On both sides, you're gonna be totally paved?
No, 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 this will not be paved, this will remain grass, it's got, this is a driveway here, but that's grass parking.
Okay.
This will be paved, like I said, about here, and after that, Millings, rolled Millings, which is basically, it's ground up road.
Okay.
So.
Kind of like.
What I have in my parking lot, yeah.
So, you know, board question, are you, are you fine with that? So he's, he's showing parking, but it's not gonna be divvied up like that, I'm not really sure how wide those spaces are by.
Yeah, they're gonna be ten by twelve.
To scale on this plan now?
That's, I confirmed that with the engineer today.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
John Harris, ten by one.
But we should have that right away, clearly labeled on it.
That is.
Oh, it is. Where it's, you can actually see it's a dotted line.
It's, where does it say that it's, and not a building line, or?
It's on another, another dot, you know.
That, as far back as that, my understanding, like, when I had a tree, this tree that's way in there, that was outside of the runway, so they wouldn't do fair with, so I took the tree down.
This is.
Let me. You, you did provide a survey.
Yeah.
Like you're, you're parking right up to the shoulder almost.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
Picture, this tree right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably right on.
Yeah. But they, this is, so they're parking like to, to the ground, so probably out there. My understanding is, because Sweet Road, remember how wide Sweet Road is on that side? I mean, I'll get, we'll get it figured out, but I don't think it's that far, and whatever we do, we just, we can mark it accordingly, I don't know if we'd lose.
We're just reacting.
Yeah, I'll figure it out.
I can have it on market, but it looks more like.
So, what will, then what's nice is that, that would be paved.
Quite exciting.
Yeah, so this is your survey, this survey, so that is, that dotted line, that, that dotted line is the right of way.
With, because you got the lines on here.
Yeah, one's the center of the road.
Maybe center of the road and.
Not more. This one, so.
But, but doesn't make sense to me about that, that's them marking that right of way line, why does it, it must be the street when that, that side goes so far out.
The edge of the street.
Then, some of these are clear of the nation, or, you know, like, my parents' property, that they came through and changed the way that the road went, and the states never did it back any to my parents.
Oh, probably the shoulders, though they did change Sweet Road, so.
Yeah, so it's possible.
It's matching the survey, so for sure, those are in the right way.
So, it'll be fixed, so we'll fix that.
Yeah.
But I would take those right out, and I'm not concerned about it, because I get all of these spots here that I'm not currently using.
So, so while we're concentrating on park, again, trying to take this one at a time, so now we know that there's a road parking out, they're gonna keep this parking, and what's gonna be paved again?
Um, pretty much to the end of the building, right about here.
And.
For the dumpster and that.
And then those parking spots?
All the way to, yeah, all the way to here.
But not the, the row of parking spots, are they gonna all be paved, or?
No, that'll end right there, and over here.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll all be paved, yeah.
There's a little bit, okay.
Yeah.
So some of it'll be paved, and then the rest of it'll be just gravel, not marked.
Right.
Okay, but that's approximately how many pairs, if somebody tells people where to park. And then there's overflow on that side, so, about that one, like, oh, how much distance?
That's a, that's a, that's a telephone pole.
Right.
Yeah.
Of the parking's duly aided. And maneuverability.
Yes, so I don't know what your, so if you take out this row of parking and everything has to be within your own, you know, make sure that that's wide enough, I don't know exactly what the measurement is there, right? And then, so the question for the board is, are you satisfied with this amount of parking, do you need more information on how to park it? I don't really know how many it is now, do you?
Well, yeah, you just, I do, you just take this, this is thirty-two, so I've go down to three hundred and thirty-five, instead of three hundred and sixty-seven.
So just.
Which I've ever.
But there's, there's no limitation for you to continue further, right?
Yes, there is limitation for me continuing for, oh, there, no, I could add it, yeah, that's what my brother said, I'm like, okay, it gets getting rid of, you know, because I, I kid, I've never filled that up either in front of this. So, yeah, no, you could, I could go with other two rows there, yeah. But, you know, you're putting everybody on, I prefer not to put them, like, my number one is to park them here on the pavement, and then two, go over there, yeah.
As close to beer as possible.
Yes, so here's the question, what was the capacity of brewery in relation to the number of parking spots that, I guess would be priority that you'd like them closer and on good solid ground? How many spots are on that side?
So, so I, I, this is what I think of it, too, I think of this as. So, so I, I, this is what I think of it too, I think of this as winter, right?
Right.
Yeah, and I've never. Yeah, so I've never, um, I've never filled up the parking in the winter, where, where they've had to go over there, you know, I can't plow. Cause they, they, you know, we'd plowed down to here, and I don't have that amount in the amount of people in the winter, you know, all my people, when my people come, when the business gets flooded, they're coming because it's sunny out and they park over.
Yeah, but still, questions, what's the capacity of?
I, I don't have a, a documented capacity yet, Tim's gonna, yeah. I wasn't given it.
From the first time around?
The fire department giving you a capacity one? Nothing on file for capacity?
So we can't, so that's something you can go out and measure?
Yeah.
And, and determine, okay.
The new building. Looks like I could, I could, well, it's only gonna be eighty-nine people for industrial.
Oh, it's more than enough for that.
Dan?
Yeah.
John Shaheen here, where, where do your employees park now?
So my employees right now park behind.
He can't see that.
Oh, okay, my employees right now park behind the concept barn, which we're tearing down. Okay, which is the silver barn, so the, behind the barn that's being replaced. Um, but it's, it's, it comes out here, so these spots, these are spots that I get added. Uh, from this, and then this out here, where I've got the millings now, I'm gonna add uh parking there, because the entrance for all employees is gonna be this backside, all employees gotta come in the back of the building.
So you've got that area there marked, employee parking?
Yep.
It's about ten spots. Um, so I guess I just question, is that enough parking for your employees, you're talking twelve to sixteen? Just for the meat processing and the canning facility?
Yeah, I've done, they, they put, they just labeled it there, but I include, I include both of them, so in total, I've got uh twenty-six spots for employees.
Okay.
And then, and at most right now, at most, I said at sixteen, really based on like a busy day like this weekend. But again, that's not gonna be that much different, because Jeff's uh processing people will be leaving before any of my sizable staff come in for the business, the hours are just completely different at the businesses, so the twenty-six spots should be more than enough for employees.
Okay.
Dan, looking at the math, you talked about a loading dock facing the road. The driveway, what appears to be driveway.
This right here?
Yeah.
The building, um, so the building, you know, that it starts to slope down there. So the building is gonna, you're gonna see about four feet of building, and then as it gets down here, you're gonna start seeing most of the building. So it's not, uh, it, it's just gonna be access back here for the dumpsters, the um, you know.
Uh, and under, and, and in the base.
Yeah, and the basement and everything like that, that's going into the garage door. Yeah. So basically, like, you could, you know, driving stuff down in the basement, you know, if you had to forklift down there and everything. Yeah, so this is, I know it's kind of hard to see, but that's what that looks like, so that would just be the roadway into that garage door there, the dumpster would be right here, um, that's where his employees. It's standing next to where we're going. So are you putting?
Gonna be concrete floor.
Yeah, concrete floor, it's gonna be rebarred and steel structure, it's gonna be steel poles, but yeah. Yeah, we had the whole engineering done on it, but you know, because it's gonna take the weight of a forklift upstairs, plus all the employees, plus the pallets and everything like that, so it's sizable, yeah. The concrete on this job alone, because all the walls are poured too. So it'd be poured walls all the way down for the whole length of the building, but it'll be there for a long time.
In terms of delivery, downtown Syracuse, six o'clock in the morning. And all the restaurants are getting tractor trailer deliveries, so nobody's there, except probably you.
So we do hear that, so they all come in, so like, they're not, they're not coming in when there's cars here, any deliveries when there's actual you know, stuff parked here, that would be our short box truck or something like that during the day, you're not getting tractor trailers in there then, that's how we work it now.
Yeah.
Um, so we've had, you know, I've had three tractor trailers in there at once, you know, unloading. The nice part now is that it's set docked, and everything's gotta go inside and.
And currently, we, we receive most of our stuff before, before noon, at, at a great old night, yeah.
But what's, just out of curiosity, what's the range of meats that you can prepare? I mean, from beef to pigs to, we do birds and game, or is it?
Well, from, from a production standpoint, uh, birds, we're looking at, we do chicken sausages.
Hmm.
Um, but uh, so chicken sausages, beef sausages, pork sausages, mixtures of beef and pork sausages. Um, we'll also be doing um barbecue ribs and pulled pork, things and, things like that, um.
Or chops?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we will be cutting meat for the, for the butcher, or for the deli area, right on site, um, and then, yeah, that will be a part of the, the subscription slash online ordering. Um, portion of the business where people will be able to get steaks going out with.
Hams.
Uh, we won't be, I, I don't want to speak smoking hams.
This won't be an Oscar smokehouse.
Um, it'll be, it'll be a smokehouse for sure, but, but probably not, not doing hams at this point.
But you could, I mean, that's.
Yes, for sure.
Matter of demand and.
Correct.
How everything else is going.
Yeah, yeah.
Smokehouse, what, what's your power source or what? Basically go through the smoke process, what are you using and?
So we'll be, we'll be buying um self-contained smooth units, and they, they run off of um hard uh hickory wood. So they're gonna be um, uh, gas and, gas and electric will be the power source that fires them up and then.
Pellets?
Pellets, um, more like sawdust, like, yeah. So not so much the pellets, but yeah. Um, and that's just the natural, it'll all just be a natural smoke at that point.
Any byproduct from that?
Yes, the smoke that comes out, it'll be exhausted, that's it.
Is there a pathway for you guys to do game meats? Or is that uh too regulated?
Um, as, as a USDA facility, I believe, yes, there, we can do any of those types of things. Uh, we currently don't, um, cause we're, we're currently under a New York State uh Aggie Markets license, so we don't do any of the game. Just haven't really been part of that strategy either. Certainly was something we could easily do there, would have all the um ability.
Is there permitted require, required for the exhaust for the smoking?
Um, not, nothing that's.
Are you doing that downtown now?
Yeah, yeah, there's no, nothing extra that you need to do, um. And, and, and I understand that's been working with USDA consultants, helping us navigate through the processing or the, the permitting process for USDA, which is coming along well, so.
You know, it's a little bit off the topic, but where are you with the septic?
Uh, so uh, just uh doing survey today of the existing tanks, the county came back and said that they county and DEC proved our plans, what we're gonna do, just to update you. Uh, let's put a two thousand gallon tank here, it's a tank that can be driven on, so it doesn't affect the parking. Um, have a meter or have alarm on it, so we'll immediately start capturing the brewing waste, they want us to start capturing now. And it'll be put in a place that it'll then be the two thousand gallon tank that we get to use for the new facility, so we'll be able to double for that. And they like that plan, and they said they weren't gonna hold um reviewing this project up uh for that, for speedies to be issued and everything like that, so uh they're doing the site survey, um. Everything's rolling, they were up there today, then, so everything's in good shape, so I know some people here reached out, I know Dave Napp did, and so the ball really got moving fast, and so yeah, everybody's, uh, you know, not out of the, I won't be happy till we're actually using it, especially now, but, no.
Get close.
Have anything in writing on that?
No hope, I, I, Emily, uh, there is that between me, between the engineer and Emily, so I'll get that. Uh, I want him to get the, I want him to get the plan to her right now. Um, I wouldn't have gone up to, been here today at the risk of this getting approved subsequently going forward, and then going to the county to get it kicked back, so that's why, so I'll get that to you.
I mean, it also is under uh the, the general municipal uh approval that is there, they'll look at this project on the twenty-sixth of April.
Hmm.
They may, by they, I mean the county and whatever departments they reach out to might have comments at that point, so um, we'll have to see what they are.
Yeah, I understand, but yeah, we do, everything we're possibly can for that. So that's it, we're going, yeah, I said, we didn't even, you know, we had ass built of everything, but we just, I just had the surveyor that did this survey come in, and I'm like, just go get the surveys on exactly how Emily wants it, um, so.
Pretty good, Jamie, Jamie, the septic is not under our purview.
It depends on what the county says in their referral. So, we'll have to see what they, you know, if they're like, listen, you've gotta wait for the, I don't know what they're going to say.
Right, but in terms of its design and operation and all that, that's not us.
That, correct, correct.
We can approve it with a contingency that.
Depends on what the GML referral says.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. It, it, by way of cleanup of this um process, there were a lot of permits over the years um that were, that were pulled and buildings that were built, so this is best for the benefit of, of this board. That we want a nice comprehensive site plan, so um that everything that has happened gets approved and, and reblessed, and um, by way of example, the, the building addition, right, is new, needs approval. Um, this existing pavilion, there was a permit issued for it, and you should have come to that and renewed because of the size of it, so um, that this, so we'd like to approve that, if you see at the forty by sixty. Part of it. See what else?
It's going back.
Um, existing pavilion twenty by thirty, that should, that should be approved, that's sitting. Again, uh, this deck. Just, once we approve it, I just want everybody to kind of be aware of what you know, things that were, that were pulled that maybe just, just less, okay, so.
So if we, if, if we approve it off of these maps, we would just say in our.
This is the.
Approving this, including.
Yes.
Forty by sixty, the twenty thirty and the deck.
All the facilities are now shown on this map.
Everything.
On the ground today, on this map.
Right.
All of that.
So maybe a brief discussion of, go through and explain what the use of each.
Sure.
One is.
Yeah.
Um, I guess why don't you start with? Come back to the original site plan, like you did, now I have one in its office, originally that was a store, so why don't you start there and then go through, uh. So, and eight wise, what happened?
It's, this updated, sorry, this is a eighteen forty-five room, it's called, um. It's evolved over time, but all this is being used for is just um event space. So, that running, uh, cafeteria store out in there, it's got two long tables. Um, so it's just another room that we can use for enclosed event space, there's no bathrooms in it. This is a, uh. So that's it, the deck was, that was pre-original Heritage Hill, that was something I built, and I did have a firm that hold on it. Um, the rest is my personal house and home. Um, the brewzium, uh, like I said, these, we've gone through it to make sure the permits were gone through and the electrical inspections were done, that was added in November of twenty twenty-one, I believe. With the Underdog Historical Association, it's a walk-through museum, if you've never been up there to see it, it's really cool, it talks about the whole brewing history in central New York since the eighteen hundreds. Um, just a self-guided little walking tour through that, so that's just used as that space. Um, the existing pavilion is uh just a, um. During COVID, I put plexiglass sites on it, we flopped down windows, so you can, you know, you can rent the space to just eat and have your own private space, or people sit in there, shelter from the rain, whatever. It's a, you know, none of these are that complicated structures, they're just like eight by eights, you know, with a frame, uh, with steel, uh, roof. Um, the barn, is the barn that had a permit pulled for the deck that was uh built there. Um, the existing pavilion that is um it basically outdoor space, uh covered outdoor space, uh, you know, through the window, I'm storing all tables and fire truck and other stuff under there, and then uh it's space that people can use that rent the barn as covered space. Um, and you could have like a clam bake or something down there, um, and uh believe that that's it.
So, so in terms of occupancy, each of those locations would need to have occupancy determined? Like the eighteen forty-five room, would that need an occupancy determination?
Yes, if it's gonna be.
So is any, any indoor? So the pavilions wouldn't require an occupancy?
I, I don't know what they're, I don't know what they are.
I think they're just a roof.
Yeah, they're just. Yeah, and they're full open. They're ways, um, no, I wouldn't think that they would, um, for based on what they are, doesn't matter if you do, I mean, I would.
No, it's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're fine with that.
Uh, the, the barns didn't change, and so the barn just added, you know, steel roof and everything like that, but it, you know. Can get an occupancy, you know, there's people are in it, so, yeah, I mean. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, but those bathrooms that are in there, will they ever be used?
Not unless the county, not, that, that, that would subsequently be the, the county, there's no water to them, they're locked up, no. It's, they're just unused space. But I, first things first, is I gotta get the county to approve the system, then I gotta get the new business on it. Then, if all that goes well, I have a tank sitting there in the ground, and yes, now if they came back and said, okay, you can use a a, a capture tank, which is what that is with an alarm, and you gotta get it up to codes for what it is. Then yes, I would open them up, but I would go through the county before that's ever done, so. They won't be used until that's done, if they ever are.
Do your driveways um have approval?
Their existing driveways for the farm, so um I never changed them.
Oh, all of them?
All of them.
Three of them?
Yeah, four, well, if you count my house, yeah, I never changed uh the, those driveways.
I think one of them I didn't, um. There was a prior site plan from several news, but I think one of them was new, it certainly didn't show on.
Oh, you're probably seeing this one, cause it was just a farm access road, so it was way out there.
Okay.
So, it's just, that's where it's been.
I, I don't know, I haven't been out there, so I assume that's, that's why I'm going, one that's all the way towards uh.
Yeah, yeah. And then the one that, the one that was done for Empire Farm Days that got approved by the county.
Which is which one?
Uh, you know, it's, you know, no, that's way down here.
Oh, you didn't weigh it down.
Everything else, everything else is just using it the way it's always been.
Okay, so again.
Yeah.
Talk about increasing the width of one of those driveways, do you know what the current width is on that?
Uh, Sean had it for me, um, when I come back, I'll get you, I'll just follow up and get you all that, and then tell, tell you what he wants to do with it to just widen it up more.
Yeah.
So.
It's, I mean, that would be the county would decide.
It's seventeen, but the county had suggested that um conversion of vague access to the site to a commercial access, so that.
Yeah.
The, the locations were fine, but they should have been widened with commercial access from the get-go, so um definitely at least that one, if not the others, you may wanna widen.
Thing is those.
If they're not.
From the original farm equipment dealership, which would have been commercial, so I don't know, they might already be at that point. Just of what it was commercial, yeah.
We'll see again, the county may come back with that recommendation when they look at it.
Is there a drainage swill on the road there or not?
There's ditches.
Yeah. No problem when it rains.
No, well, I mean, unless the ditch is clogged, then I call Jamesville and they come up and stick it out, unclog it, yeah, but I don't have to deal with it.
Um, yeah, I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure the county will comment on, they always comment on curb cuts, so we'll see that in the next amount of time, there, there's discussion about um the, the preservation land, right, and like, you can't do anything on the preservation.
Well, I, I, I can do things, but the, the conservation, there's a New York Agriculture Land Trust holds the conservationies, so everything I do, before you guys see it or hear about it, I've already discussed to go through with them, so they come up and they audit annually, they come up and walk the whole farm and make sure that I'm doing everything in compliance with them, but that's really. Come up and they audit annually, they come up and walk the whole farm and make sure that I'm doing everything in compliance with them, but that's really.
Property subject to the conservation?
Not the part you're looking at.
Okay, yeah, all right, so.
But it's still. If I was to say I'm gonna put in an ice rink and have, you know, high school hockey or something like that. They can, they can say that's not a business supporting the farm. As long as I'm doing things that are supporting the farm business, which everything on here has been. Then they, you know, are in agreement with it.
Let me, let me be a little clearer with my question, because again, this is new to me, but this rectangular piece you have. Can you not do anything beyond this rectangular piece?
I can't do anything beyond it without their permission, but if I wanted to build a beef barn. I could, but, but they have to agree to it and it has to, there's certain limitations, like I can't use up more than two percent of that land. Uh, for, with a non-permeable surface and stuff like that, so.
So how do we know that they've approved them, this stuff?
I, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna sound like it, but it, that. That's between me and them, right? They, they monitor and control that, the, the town doesn't administer my conservation easement, so.
Right, I'm just trying to understand what, what it is, just, just insofar as um. If another Ford, well, now we're in here and, and all kinds of things start to happen. Are, is there something that you need to know about that? Easement, I, I, I just don't, I haven't seen it, so I'm trying to get it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like I said, it's, it's a contract, uh, you know, between myself and the state, right, that included, you know, compensation for giving up. Um, control over the farmland and what I can do with it, and so that's between, like, um. You know, for instance, putting the farm show roadways in, that had to go to their board, they had to go to the state and the New York State Commissioner of Agriculture approved that. That's the level of control that they have over the farm.
If you come in with something big, then we'll.
And I sent a letter to Tim, Tim, it should have been in the package, right, the, the letter from Nile, just saying that they. Yeah, it's, it's in your package, there's a letter from them that just says they, they're in agreement, consistent with the.
Yeah, so great, thank you. So then if something else comes in later, you would get the same.
Same thing, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, no, I know, and I didn't wanna sound like, don't worry about that, it's just that, you know. I got asked too about the contract, there's numbers and stuff like, I mean, I'm just comfortable, like, it sounded like, prove their, show their approval and then understand it's within that, yeah.
Okay.
So here's the, here's the letter.
Yeah.
Um, it says these plans fall within the farmstead area. Is that that rectangle?
Yeah, and I have another one, another five acres across the street that the green bins and the shop exist on. That allows me to do um, to build buildings that support the operation over there too. Fifteen acres in total, and after that, it's just the farmland.
Yeah, I think that's the map that we were originally up for, which, which. She said it doesn't matter if it's this board or one.
Somebody else, yeah.
Fifty years from now, that it would just be an overlay of looking down of your building within those fifteen acres and.
Yep.
Okay, that's where it should be.
Yep, absolutely.
That's what we're looking for.
That is, um, so I, I think that. There is a bigger survey that includes both sides of the road, so I'll just include that in the next, so, and it, and the document I sent you, so it's a whole survey of all three hundred acres. And it's blocked out and it shows that the five acres across the street and the ten acres here.
We.
Okay.
Purpose of that is to keep this as a farming operation in perpetuity?
The purpose is to the land, yeah, is used for agriculture purposes, so. The, what we were hoping, so ways and claps, so first conservation easement, where three families went together on one easement. And um, and so all six hundred acres there is protected. It also gives the town or other farms that are adjacent to it. A leg up in getting their land protected, because it's, they wanna protect land in blocks. So I've mentioned before and I'd love to just like help lead a charge of trying to get some of the other farms to jump onto that, especially with Pratt's Falls being right there, then you get a whole. Area of agricultural production right there, so, and then the other thing is you can't build solar panels on it. So you can't double dip, you can't, if you put it into farmland protection, you can't put solar on it, so.
Staying.
Yeah. I just throwing that out there, that's all.
Into something else.
All your new colleagues are gonna have the panel plan today. Yeah, yeah, well, I'm a firm believer in. Yeah. Put them right on that roof, like load it right up, uh, we got a whole bit, it's gonna take care of most of our electricity for the day, and then if the battery technology gets there, so we can, you know. May harvest it to be able to continue to use it for the evening, but it's just right now, the technology's not there for it, so.
I mean, next month, we can. Get an idea of what.
What it looks like, yeah.
So, yeah, just to be consistent, board, right, we, we just had the farm, you know, the. The agri tourism and we totally wanted to review their sign and their materials, they haven't come out there yet, but. Um, if this is ready, that would be something that the board would wanna review, besides the materials.
I put the size on there and the materials, but I didn't put like what it actually looked like, you know.
Yeah, that would be helpful, put that on, on the list. Um.
You even, you have a name for the operation yet?
It's called Meiko.
Meiko.
Is it really?
It's not. We've, we've tossed around a couple of names, but inside, if you look at that, the document, one of them's on there, but, you know. That we wanna slow walk into that, it's gonna be something that's gonna last a lifetime. And we lucked out Heritage Hill, you know, Josh got a strong brand name and stuff like that, so we wanna make sure this is like, you know, something captures everything.
I guess on the last one, I could look back through and probably come up with about four names, cause you kept putting different names on it, it's like, landed on here.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And sooner or later, though, it had the name so that you can put it on the file.
Yeah, well.
Cause somebody will look in at Hill Country and go, who's, what's that?
Yeah. Just, it's gotta be a balance of not, you know, we got, we have a marketing person that's, you know, looking at this and we wanna, you know. We have to get through the, honestly, we have to get through this to start getting across the finish line on some of the other things.
And, and don't wanna do something that's copyrighted or already.
That's why I say Meiko, holding place, you know, whatever, just call it that for now, but I, I, I won't rush uh the brand name, cause that's gonna last a lifetime.
Okay, I have another question. I read a parcel number. That this is on.
Yeah.
Which parcel did I read?
I don't have the text map.
Discussion of combining the two into one, because your site plan covers two different parcels.
Yeah, except for, so, but because of the farmland protection and it's, it's, this is an egg business, this is considered egg business. So you don't, from my understanding is I don't have the setbacks on those individual parcels issues as it being an egg business, so um. You know. If that's a, if that's a necessity, uh, suppose we can go do it, but it's um. Like I said, this is all, the farm can't be split up, those parcels can't be split up, they can't be sold, so.
Right, but it, the parcel number that I read.
Yeah.
Said. If you come here, Dan.
Okay.
Here's the one parcel.
Yeah.
Is that the parcel number I read?
No, it's, it's, yeah, which is. Hundred and ten acre, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Technicality and assessments itself.
Um, yeah, yeah. Got involved on that one, but yeah, and this will be on active, you know, and the house.
The house.
Yeah, house is separate, yeah. Uh, you know, they, oh, they had a plan, there is like a scale that we could have been scaling it, you know. Yeah.
I mean, it's, it would be a lot line adjustment and we could have proven as part of this, it doesn't have to hold up anything.
Uh, what do I gotta do to get that going?
Go back to your surveyor.
Yeah.
Did the board follow and. On this map.
An adjustment.
Lot line adjustment, basically.
No, okay.
And there was, so then try that rectangle, that's one parcel.
So that's just a lot line adjustment?
Or is it a reverse subdivision?
Well, that is what we call, if you're not.
Have one tax parcel, not two though. A lot line adjustment to me means you're preserving at least. We're preserving both tax and.
There's currently.
There are two parcels involved.
Right, no, that's right, but are we gonna end up with just one?
No, if we do, if he does a lot line adjustment, it would still be two parcels.
Yeah.
Just on it and everything else.
Everything that's the farmstead, that's.
Yeah.
Buildable line would be one parcel. And the other hundred.
Across the street.
Right, right now, the house.
I get the.
This is like one.
Those are separate parts.
Farmers too. If we change this, this is one and this is two, so you still have two parcels.
But there's still, you, you start with two and you have two.
Yeah.
Um, so that would be, that would be great, and we can do it, it's a lot line adjustment, but it would be sort of, we can make it part of this whole approval.
Yeah.
Process, so your surveyor.
So what I'm gonna do, uh.
I need to look in, this is gonna be.
Yeah, I'm following.
Yes.
Um, another.
Yeah, oh, okay, this is all. Right. So what's the ten point three? I thought this one square was one, this is one, and then this is three.
Right.
Then we're gonna go down, we're gonna lose the tax, which is fine.
No, yeah, no.
This, this is one, and the rest of this is all on a big farm. No, that's just, that's just for purposes, that's just part, when you see farmstead, this is just the purposes of the. Now, so this is one tax, and then a hundred like fifty acres around the other. This is just. Yeah, so that's basically, it's just gonna expand that out to this box. Perfect, beautiful.
Well, then, all those questions aren't really gonna come to very much in the future unless you end up expanding to some, doing something else in your parcel, so that would be helpful. Um. When we talked to our last person who was in on the ag reuse, there were operational things that were discussed. Is there anything that you want to raise from an operational standpoint?
What are the operational hours now, do we know?
We talked about that earlier, I don't know, I asked that question. Um, we know what his operational hours are, and yours were gonna be seven to three, five days a week typically, unless you gear up and then you would maybe put in a second shift on. Seven to three, three to eleven, kind of deal.
Yep, yeah.
Um, we could put that in the resolutions, you don't have to, it's up to you. Um, we, we had some other things in the last one we did about music, I don't know if this is. And all that other stuff, um, I just want to make sure that we have a consistency of.
So we're, the stuff he's already doing, we're including in this new.
Um, what do you mean?
He was already doing music.
Do we need to update anything based on his current operation? Everything in compliance?
Thing that I, I'm just thinking is that we're trying to get everything.
Under one.
Set, you know, which is great, uh, and bring everything into conformance, so if we do have any operational things you think you want to add. Then we should do it now, is all I'm saying. I'm not saying change what he's doing, but.
Probably should know what he's doing now, which I think is somewhere, like, what your operating hours are.
You know, and you gotta, you gotta understand, it changes easily and it changes, you know, I mean, it changed with COVID, like, I mean, I get very.
Dan, just, just, eh, eh, like. For your operation, you should ask for the approval for a second shift.
Well, yeah.
As opposed to having to come back here.
And I wanted to clarify, cause I, I mean, I, I don't foresee the demand reaching to the point of needing, you know, three shifts a day, seven days a week.
That's too bad.
But if that happened, I would like to be able to do that, so um. And clearly I could see us definitely pushing into a second shift, but at the same time, a, a third shift, you know, if, if it, if it came up where we needed it, I would like to be able to just.
The more you can define it here, the better it is for us and not having to come back and redo the whole thing over again, so.
Yeah.
You know, and Dan, for you, you can shrink it, if, if you make your hours, you know, ten to eleven P M, you decide to close earlier, that's fine.
Yeah, 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 I see, yeah, I just wanna make sure that, that, cause like, you know, so, like, I might, Chuck and I were talking, maybe in January, February, next year I'll be completely closed. But I don't need that, like, that's just the absolute.
Oh, yeah, you don't need that, but you don't wanna say you're gonna close at ten o'clock every night and then decide you need to be open till midnight, then you gotta come.
Yeah, so pretty much I have set the standard that we are, uh, everything up there is done at, at ten o'clock, you know, there's a, we have a couple festivals we've stuck with. The Fourth of July became bright vibes, that had, I heard you mentioned fireworks, that had, we had fireworks permit issued for that. Um, so kept it to the same number, you know, farm days and stuff like that, and I still continue to, I still plan to continue to do that. So I'm happy with the, you know, I've stuck with that ten o'clock hours. Um, I think music, I think we've learned how to like have a good relationship with the neighbors, I know. Heard that nobody had any real complaints last year of anything, I've dialed things down, I've figured out how to do some stuff with sound and stuff. Um, so, you know, there's some days, you know, you get, like, this weekend I had music Friday, Saturday, Sunday, single acoustic icing, it was cool, you know, it was good. Um, doesn't create problems, nobody's complaining about it, everybody's still there enjoying it, so. Um, I'm happy with the ten o'clock.
You have some outdoor um, music?
Yeah, yes, when it's, when it's nice out, yeah, yeah.
So, um, question, up, up to you about how, or how detailed you feel this needs.
Yes, correct, yeah, yeah.
So are you talking about like adding on the seventy decimals? Well, we had. Last month, it was said at seventy.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, for all, everybody has.
I'm not worried about that.
But that's at the property.
That's, that's at a property line, somebody else's property, that, right? I know, I, but, yeah. I'm not gonna be able to stay on that, I can't take that much of a sell out there, so yeah, I, I, I was there for that, me and my, and I thought like, that's really not that bad.
Right, but I just know.
Things reasonable.
That's what you're saying, that is making a standard for everybody, so it, so it's a public document, what we did with the mapstone and. And I'll send that to you, and if you can just put together something that. Looks like it, I'm not saying it's be exactly the same, but you'll see the things that we looked at and, and would that be a suitable?
Dan, have you done weddings there?
Yeah, yeah.
Everything.
Just like, I don't ever, you know, I just like.
Right, just like, yeah.
I do a lot of corporate events and stuff like that, that's where it's really been awesome, because they like, we like to stay open, so, you know, and stuff like this, there've been little ones and stuff.
Pretty typically post a corporate event or wedding?
The barn and outside, or if it's, you know, if it was during the week and we were closed, like, you know, because we have narrowed down winter hours i- inside the root house. Um, and, you know, the barn and the pavilion outside, so.
Right, the capacity numbers.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Play there.
Yeah, that's.
I think the last thing I had on my list was um, was the site lighting and. Some of the light poles in that, John, I don't know if you had any comments on that, but.
Yeah, there's just the standards for tax, I compliant tower, direct, it's showing lighting, so we need to, the board will need to see your.
Pictures.
Yeah. Any, any issue with any of the places that you see lighting or anything on the building?
I think it's more of the question of um. Like in the evenings, since it's winter, maybe, or so, that there's, not they want a whole lot of light, but enough light in the parking lot, when they start reaching the, the further end that they can. See.
Yeah.
Well, further end of the lot. As they're walking to the vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, these, well, these will, yeah, these will project and, yeah, yeah, I agree, and so that the goal is with those.
Even your employees.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. But what's nice is that right now I have light on the backside, well, of the quonset here, but it's gonna be further out here. Um, but we'll make sure, for sure, and that's just, right now, I feel that I could do it with those twenty thousand lumens uh lights on the building. Going back out to the lots and the ones in the front to the front.
Any, have you had any problems with the amount of water?
No, not since I, not since I redid the water line to go to our springs, so that was. Thank God, my grandfather bought that farm there, that's the water, the initial well was awful. Twenty four hundred parts per million dissolved solids, it would run out, I'd have to close, it was a nightmare, and uh. Grandpa had PVC pipe run from where he pulled it out of a, a shallow well, I put a, you know, encased well in, you know, it's all county approved. Found that line, pressurized it, and it's held, and it's held two years now, it's been awesome. Even as dry as it was last year and brewing and everything else is going on, never sure with water.
Where is that?
It's on ninety one, so you know when you're driving down ninety one, you see our fire hydrant for the pond, that's always flowing, there's so much water there. Um, and it's just, it's amazing the difference and it's good water.
Yeah, yeah.
So, bar in the grill, it's out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, between the eighteen forty five room.
No, I just have a hand wash station for the county health, so.
So that well is not used for your water for the uh, for the microbrew?
No, it's still hooked up, but it's there for emergency purposes, but not, I, I hope. No, it's still hooked up, but it's there for emergency purposes, but not, I, I hope that a half a mile uphill, two hundred foot rise. Uh, I have two, three hundred gallon holding tanks there, and then we treat it from there, uh, which is nice because we don't. The tests were good, so we didn't have to chlorinate, so we reverse osmosis that, and we have the, some, the purest water to start the brewing process with, so. It's, it's been a, a good advantage, and, yeah, the water, we're lucky there.
Timmy brought up before, and I don't think you gave a clear answer, what were your thought, um, um, the paved area versus when it goes to milling, so. Your thoughts on that?
Milling there might as well be paved.
It's just asphalt that's been ground up.
Yeah, and, and I, so, so, but once these cars have set the parking, then the process is set, right? That's why I'm very religious with my employees, I'm like, you start the first street spots, and then everybody goes after that. Now, good seasonally paint that, paint them, you know, you get the millings, get them rolled out over the spring, by the winter, that's all gonna pull off. I'd prefer not to, because I think we can, we can get the proper parking done that. I use, uh, those concrete, uh, blocks, the one ton blocks to delineate the, that's where it starts. And so I would do that here and there, it also protects the cars and, and it sets the thing, and then during the winter, I can move them out so we can plow. That's been a process that's worked good for us, burping won't work, we'll destroy it in the, in the winter.
Dan, when you have an event, do you stick somebody outside to?
Oh, it was me this weekend, yeah, yeah, it's the minute that one person parks the wrong way, the whole thing's done. You know, so it's very, parking discipline is, is key, so, yeah, so one of us does, but it's usually me. And I, eh eh, the, the year after COVID, that was just a crazy year for us, I was out there, I turned people away, you know, it was weird, but. Not fun as a business person, but you have to do it, you know?
Dan, you got any other comments?
Dan, who's your design professional for this?
Um, so we got a team, so Pat Lamy is the architect, the engineer is, um, I think it's Steve Snell. Yeah, yeah, so, Pat's, um, Pat's been working with him, and then, you know, we had a structural. With this building, you had to have structural, I mean, if you go through the, the blueprints, I mean, it's all, you know, pretty, pretty intense structural engineering. Steel and all the concrete reinforcement and everything.
Have you been talking to anybody yet about the geothermal, like, where you're gonna put the wells, or is it gonna be a horizontal hoop field, or?
Uh, it'll be, um, it'll be, um, so, or, I'm assuming, saying it right, horizontal, we'll do seven foot trenches. Um, before we do all this parking lot, the first thing we do is excavation, and then put the whole geothermal basically underneath all of that parking. And then run it back, yep, those loop system, run it back in, and really, the plant. Jeff's production area has to be kept at forty two point six degrees at all times, so it's gonna be cooling will be significant in there. The rest of the plant is just gonna be off a geothermal, we're not gonna, you know, offices might have like a split unit or something like that in there, but. Um, we won't have a, a big heating drop for the facility.
Do you have a contractor lined up yet for the geothermal?
Uh, I got a quote, I quoted, I got a quote from one, yeah.
I just put one in my house last year, and, um, the only thing I would caution you about is making sure you get somebody with some. Good experience, because they can be tricky.
I can imagine.
I love it, I love it, it's doing a great job, but it's, uh, it's important to get somebody that's done a lot of it.
Well, reach out, you know, if you can reach out, and, uh, if you got anybody, you know, that can provide that insight, I don't know, I, I, I. Probably offline, I'm not gonna tell you the middle of it. You know, you got, you know, so I'd love to follow up on it, we could, that's sometimes.
And the, the basement is gonna be strictly dry storage?
Correct, yeah. Dry storage, it's, you know, designed for the firewall and everything like that, but, um, it won't have any separate, um, heating or anything like that in there. The, the, the geothermal will run in loops through the floor. So, you know, and then the majority of the basement, except for the south end, will be in the ground. So it should maintain, you know, decent temperature, we're only gonna have, you know, tractors, equipment, you know, dry storage type items. Woodchips, all of that down there.
The only, uh, I mean, the only concern, potential concern I've got is, um, I can't imagine. Adding all this, um, that the truck traffic is not going to increase. Uh, I hear what you're saying, but, um, between distributing the meat, the expansion of the bottling. Increasing your distribution, it just seems to stand to reason the truck traffic is gonna increase. And obviously, that can be a pretty dicey road through there, so that's, that's my only concern. But I love the idea.
Too bad that they, it's too bad that they did, uh, eh, for a while, they had forty five, they had it forty five through there, and then they changed it back to fifty five. I don't know what happened with that, but I was talking to Randy Holbrook about that, and we both would be in favor of them going back to forty five through there for both of our businesses' saves. I mean, you know, we're not, we're not gonna stop the increase in traffic in poverty, things are gonna get developed, and that's gonna happen, but, you know, it should be made safer, because just the motorcycles alone, some, one of those guys is gonna die there.
It, it's very difficult, we tried it here. And the state just does not like the lower speed limit.
We're all for it, and we'll do whatever we can to make things wide enough and safe enough and, and everything like that, but, eh eh, you know, eh eh, it bothers me as much as it bothers anybody else.
Yeah, I was just, I, I mean, the only point I was trying to make is I don't think it's realistic to, to think that the truck traffic is gonna stay the same.
Oh, there'd be, you know, there'd be an increase, for sure, but what, I guess my point was that, i- it's not gonna be like this, this continuous flow of trucks in and out. Your morning deliveries, and then we'll have our box truck like we do now with our van, but it would just be our box truck, so, um. Eh, of course, it's gonna be more, it's a new business, and it's got stuff coming in and out, I just don't see it being, we're not getting from multiple, multiple vendors bringing stuff in. It's, we're gonna continue to do like the once a week deliveries of packaging and everything like that that we get now, and then the meats. Uh, how often, how often you bring them in, Jeff, right now?
Uh, we get two, three deliveries a week at the, at Grant. But I think with the basement, it's gonna give us the ability to have larger shipments, which will give us quantity discounts and pricing, as well as. Decreasing the number of deliveries, so, I mean.
So if you can put that in the operations, you know, section, everyone can look at it, decide what's important or not important, or. Have a further discussion about it.
I have a question about the sign, did Tom, did you any, did you do research on a sign size, if there's any?
There, there is, there is not, um, a sign, so it's gonna be in that just reasonable discretion of this board.
And the sign is what we did in the county's right away, they, before you go stick it up, that is probably, it is, yeah.
I just have it where the existing sign is, so.
Yes, if this parking stuff is in the right away, then the sign's in the right way. Oh, there, I see that, has to just be where it is, it's scooched back a little bit.
You know, you can know that. My apple trees are gonna block it now.
Our property, we've got those, some posts that are the right away. We're just the other side. We found those and went six inches.
Can the map show the right away?
Easier to know it now.
I'm just, I'm just bummed out, because now.
Oh, you buy the apple trees that I planted in the survey.
Which is the right away, where does it say right?
The right away, we, we've compared with the survey, and it is that dotted line where it's, it's right behind that first row parking. It doesn't say it on here, Dan.
All right, well, I don't get to say it down there somewhere.
Okay, so it's very, we'll just put in, um, right of way.
Kevin wants a hockey ring.
And I want games.
So it's just using that as an example, I wasn't actually gonna do it.
All this talk, and I have an. I mean, you're known for your broccers too, right?
I don't wanna give the wrong impression.
You post your secret recipes on the wall?
You can come watch us make it though.
One more thing, um, I, I heard Mr. Kelly, you know, talk about, um. When this paving and some of this, these improvements would be done, and I, I don't know if you wanna talk about a timeline.
Well, what is the construction start date? Alright, so, so, well, I mean, you guys are gonna sell us that, right, at the end of the day, our goal, like, we're in central New York. So, so the goal was to be starting the concrete work August first, to be able to open March of twenty twenty four. Because, and the excavate, the tearing down of the concept barn and stuff like that, I can start out, that's just part of my farm operations. I can dig, I can even dig down, and I can put all the other stuff in, but I can't start any of the construction until we have that, so that was our goal. So, but I would hope, and I've got, and we got the stuff going down with the county, but I think that's the result. I'd love to get all these back to you next month, and get this going forward. The one thing I'd like you to consider is, do we have to do the public hearing? Because Ag and Markets policy says it does, it's not required, um, and we're packaging all this, that puts another month on it, and we're starting, if it's pushing that out.
So we can do a public hearing, next time, we've got enough. For a public hearing, let's see what happens.
Okay, alright, that's us, I'll get to work on all this stuff, as.
Gotta go to the county too.
And which the county, and that might not even work for the county, right, so the county would not even work, but I'm, the, my feeling and my belief on what I'm hearing from my engineer, and what I saw in an email, is we're gonna be okay, but. Our comments, we, we're supposed to get those in a, in a week or two, right?
Alright, so we'll have those before.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, that's, um, that'd be awesome, and I'll get to work on this right now.
You're gonna, you're gonna put together like an operations thing, put a timeline together as well, don't be discussed with the next company. Yeah, it, it, just a, it's just a discussion.
Operations, construction timeline.
We just wanna know when we can go get sausages.
Well, the biggest, the biggest, the biggest holdup, honestly, is gonna be the, is the lead time on some of the production equipment that Jeff's gotta buy. You know, that's, that's gonna be the stuff that's.
And the USDA.
And USDA approval and everything like that, so we got a lot of hurdles in front of us, so, whatever you guys could do, it's appreciated.
One more question, looking at the south end, by way of the building. Okay, I get, like, going down, that's that part, replacement and so on.
So it's, it's kind of like one of those man slash, you know, that's where everybody's gonna enter, right? But that's where we also go out with the garbage, cause the dumpster will be right up there, so you'll go over the top of it.
Be back, that's, if you can walk out of that, you're not gonna drop down to.
Oh, no, yeah, and this is a steel, steel staircase there, and this is a big steel landing right here, and the dumpster will be on the other side of it, so you walk out and you put the tractor, you know, right from the back. Yeah, so it's, so it'll be, it'll be shot everything, and this is just, you don't have to use bots or anything, it's gonna be raised right into it.
So, this, this is the west side of the building? How fast does the land fall away?
So right now, I've got, you got about at least. Forty feet, cause it's equivalent, it's the same width as, as Heritage Hill, eh, but on back here, there will be standalone coolers. They're gonna, they're not gonna be permanent, they're, they're gonna be put on the backside, accessing from the front. And so, uh, they'll have, uh, yeah, beyond that, have another twenty feet, but there's no, nothing, there's actually any traffic practice.
Yeah, so that's why you have the dock up front as opposed to.
Exactly, and these are emergency exit doors only, so there's not even, there's nothing back there into these.
My thought was like, those are your trucks, if that was on the backside, that just takes the truck out of all the congestion, ready, there's the, there's the host trucks, so on.
Yeah, the problem was that, you know, the trucks not fucking up on that, you know? So, so the truck.
If this one's redesigned, the, the doors are.
Yeah.
I'm just playing devil's advocate, that's.
The, the tractor trailers, so you'll be, well, the, are gonna come in there, the food guys will not wanna come down here. They're gonna wanna come here, because they're gonna go right into Heritage Hill, right, so you're talking, you're talking, them moving food from across this. Or building, then go into Heritage Hill, this is the last of all worlds, and then this will be, other than like, let's say our box truck, which is small and just usually maneuverizer. Tractor trailers won't be coming in out here when Heritage Hill has got traffic going on, just like it, just like it is now. The food purveyors come at six, seven o'clock in the morning, they drop it off, they're gone, nobody even sees them, so I would prefer to keep that there because of the product flow.
Other thing I would say, is that my experience with our business is, are we, uh, in our business? We've had a lot of problems with, with truck drive. More, less season ones.
Yes, and they can't even not hit a bridge in Liverpool. No, I'm with you, uh, we thought long and hard about this, we went back and forth, and we got USDA approved, the other thing with this one is. It's important how we stage stuff coming in with USDA, so they wanna know that when it's brewery stuff coming in, it's immediately going over here to the brewery or food. And then when it's, uh, meat production stuff, it's going this way, and we've gotta actually document that, so. We thought we were gonna have to, and we didn't, they said we didn't have to. Every storage goes right in there, kitchen's gonna go right through here, through the corridor, and then Jeff stops, over again. It's the flow. That was, you know, cause we, you know, I thought about that as well, and then, then another aspect is winter time, you're dropping down tractor trailer. Down in elevation, not always good.
Cause this drops off in the back, right?
To the point that you're now at the bottom of those first story.
We're good.
You work out tomorrow morning? Then you'll send like the, the level of the ass, go then I got. Uh, I just wanna appreciate the movement of that public hearing and doing that, thank you.
Yeah, you need these back.
No, I've got all copies, so those are yours. Oh, that was the, that's the original, oh, yeah.
We've got a stack of them, you should collect it.
Sarah needs.
I want you guys to keep whatever you need, anything that you don't need, I'd rather.
All those, uh, surveys and podcasts.
Uh, I do wanna, I wanna mention too, um, I got a call a couple weeks ago, someone at the county was talking about this, and so. Syracuse dot com got word about it, so, well, Jeff and I asked them to wait until after the speeding, if needed, clear that everything has to go through planning and stuff. They're gonna be running an article on it, so.
Hockey ring, uh, that'll be the next review.
Okay, Smith, Paul, the egg fellow, see, preliminary site plan reviews, project located at twenty three ninety three. Zero two one, that there's zero two dash eleven dot one.
That's on the connection.
What the records show that Roy Smith is reclusive himself, uh, from this discussion because of, uh, immateriality. Alright, uh, state your names, line up and start talking.
Alright, well, my name's Ed Reed, engineer, working with the Confluence to discuss with you all tonight, the. Twelve thousand six hundred square foot, dry storage and retail building located on Kelly Road, of which about nine thousand square feet of that is going to be dry storage. Balance about thirty six hundred square feet is gonna be retail space. And that retail space, uh, primarily intended for their, uh, egg sales right from their farm. But they're also gonna be offering repackaged, uh, goods and products from other local businesses and farms in the area. Access is gonna be granted right off Kelly Road, there is gonna be, um, a new access point just west of the existing driveway that services the farm. Um, if you've been up there, there's a gravel pad that has since been leveled, so it's gonna be in that area. Twenty two parking stalls are proposed, uh, on the east and south side of the retail space with, uh, access for customers who are, who have trailers and then deliveries are gonna be able to travel west across the front of the building. Thank you, Bill, quick, do you like something? Yeah, so, getting back to what we're talking about, uh, twelve thousand, about twelve thousand six hundred square foot dry storage and retail building located on Kelly Road, of which about nine thousand square feet of that is going to be dry storage, balance about thirty six hundred square feet is gonna be retail space. And that retail space, uh, primarily intended for their, uh, egg sales right from their farm. But they're also gonna be offering repackaged, uh, goods and products from other local businesses and farms in the area. Access is gonna be granted right off Kelly Road, there is gonna be, um, a new access point just west of the existing driveway that services the farm. Um, if you've been up there, there's a gravel pad that has since been leveled, so it's gonna be in that area. Twenty two parking stalls are proposed, uh, on the east and south side of the retail space with, uh, access for customers who are, who have trailers and then deliveries are gonna be able to travel west across the front of the building. With egress being provided further down up of this existing farm road down here. Uh, the, there is gonna be one ADA compliant bathroom in the facility, which is gonna have its own septic system, which has since been submitted and approved by County Health Department. Building itself is gonna be of metal construction, metal roof. Uh, under the retail space, there is going to be a stone wainscot facade. Architecturally, I also brought with me, which I'll head out now.
They'll discontinue the, whether we buy our eggs now?
Yes.
That'll, that'll close down, yeah. It's so cool, you go in there and see the eggs coming out.
The, we had to provide a disconnect from people going into the farm area because of avian influenza. We wanted to just ensure that our animals were safe, so, um, from disease and contamination.
Yeah.
It's interesting that you're protecting the animals from us.
Um, I, just following up on some of the comments I heard with the last presentation, this far as lighting, same kind of thing, it's gonna be dark sky compliant, uh, wall mounted, wall packs. Uh, signage, there is going to be a new sign constructed out in front. Um, I did also talk to Carlton a little bit about traffic flow, that was one of the things that we had discussed. Our signage goes, there's gonna be a new sign erected out in front, but there's also going to be a couple signs, excuse me, at the intersection, which are gonna point retail or the vehicles or the retail space this way, uh, tractor trailers and just for trailers picking up. Even tax supplies out here will be directed this way, just to keep trucks and trailers and stuff from piling up in front of the retail. Operationally, uh, it's my understanding that the business is going to be open from, I think we discussed eight to five, Monday through Friday, with one evening being opened a couple extra hours, Saturday, seven to three, no hours on Sunday.
So with the fire department, we go up and buy our eggs for our pancake breakfast, we'll now buy them on the retail side?
Correct, yeah.
Even though we're buying whatever thirty dozen is on there from there, okay?
Room for extra.
Yeah.
All ahead.
And you, yeah, well, we usually do, and you could probably go get extra dates, because I think we have plenty there, yeah.
Coming up on my comment a minute ago about signage, um, I did print out just to have with us for discussion purposes, this is pretty much what the, that where the new sign is gonna be, it's what's existing out there now, but it's gonna be a, essentially a variation of what existed, no neon lights or. Thank you, very, so on.
Not the rusty size, probably.
Uh, so I think the existing sign measures three by five, right? But I think I put four by eight on the site plan, so we'll just have to flush that out when the, when the time comes, but something between three and four and five and eight.
Our sign that's on is four by eight. Back to moving our store years ago, it's roughly the same size. Yeah, the name on it, and then the, the days and the hours, and it, because there was separate days, you know, it's not just like Monday, Saturday, every day, but it took up the space and it was easily readable. You know, people weren't. It wasn't gaudy either. Age. And again, I'm relaying back my prior days, is there gonna be a walk-in cooler anywhere in here that?
No.
No, it's just the.
There'll be standalone coolers.
Another thing I did forget to mention, as far as the building itself is concerned, is there's no, there's no kitchen in there, they're not gonna be preparing anything in there, it's just repackaged, this.
I eat like maple syrup and honey and.
What we made.
Sausages. Negotiate that.
And how, how many parking spaces for the retail side?
Showing twenty two.
Width of the driveways. The one.
Twenty six on the, on the new entrance.
Yeah.
The other thing I've done is, so this is all gravel in here, and what we had discussed was taking some of this gravel out and incorporating some grass and landscaping in here, so to assist with traffic patterns and flows.
And, uh, you did say it, the store itself will be ADA accessible?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a real problem with our current setup.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, we get a lot of older folks and some of them call us and have, have us bring the eggs out to them.
Up there, yeah, yeah.
It's gonna make life a lot easier for.
Yeah.
So the existing egress driveway.
This one?
Yeah, um, looking at angles and so on, most stretch trailer, one trailer to generally or that.
So, so, let me discuss that too, um, so I currently, I have shown, and this was the discussion we were having, was I'm keeping this area shown as gravel, um, so as it stands right now, from this existing utility pole to between the two existing utility poles, it's, it's all gravel, um, this, this entire area is, is open to the road. So, this is going to be left with the intention of being, when the big delivery tractor trailers come in at the off hours, when they come in, they can unload, this'll give them the space to make that maneuver. This is more intended for, you know, the guy with the landscape trailer on the back that's picking up some feed or whatever, he can get out of there like that.
And he's going westbound.
Yeah.
There'll be enough of a car you can.
Like a little on the dirt, it's fine, yeah.
Starts as a little bit, ends up a lot.
Depends on how big his landscape trailer is.
Six foot. Don't quote me.
Picture, uh, John handed out, basically, it's in this big green space, little building.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I know when we spoke Carlton originally, you're saying like hay and straw and so on, is that still gonna be stored in there also in tanks? And then whatever feed, the feed's usually in a forty, fifty pound bag or a hundred pound bag or something, or.
Right, so on the end of the barn here, where the overhead doors are, uh, just a way of easy access to get the hay and straw in here, um, that'll primarily be kept down here and then this area here would be, uh, you know, cold storage for, you know, pallets of bagged feed. Um, fifty pound bags, forty pound bags, hundred pound bags, whatever customer wants.
Is there a separate storage space for your prepackaged foods? You know, if, say you buy three cases and you got two on display, you got one to store somewhere, is there a storage area separate for the food items, or prepackaged items?
Um, you know, honestly, it's something I hadn't, hadn't thought about, um. So, the honest answer is no. Um, I think it's something that we may have to, you know, segregate, uh, portion of this, um, storage area, you know, for the overflow of, you know, items, yeah.
I'm just speaking from experience.
Inventory, yeah.
Yeah, you know, cause if it's, it's stuff attract mice.
Right, right.
And you don't want the food.
Sure.
Right next to that.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, let's, food for thought.
You're complete savage.
Yeah. Great idea.
Now, remove the Johnny account. Either one, oh, both Jones. Got you in.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, do you have any comments, questions?
How are the, uh, retail store and the, uh, office area and all that going to be heated and cooled?
Uh, in-floor heat, um, most likely propane.
Okay, no cooling?
Uh, cooling with, um, the wall mounted, uh, what do you call them?
Split, split.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I've got, too.
Okay, appreciate it. Do you know what the zoning district does? Here? Here? Okay. Or this, or that, or this thing that. And then the family food. What that egg, oh, there's the land, the rock, or, or maybe the.
And I wait to pretend they approve that, that they drive.
Probably, but it's all in one big, well, since the excavation, it's all. Have you gone to town and just checked down, um, driveway?
Down, Evan?
Front of my, we are.
John, mute your microphone.
Yeah.
We're all starving. And all we've been talking about all night is food.
That's your sharing.
It's a long meeting.
If I might say something, it was a way for a bit. I guess they've been talking about it, right? They don't always share everyone. And that's alright, because I'm wanting to let them know, as long as they're doing a good job, anyway, uh, we have a pretty neat computerized mill that'll do about anything. We said what, eight years ago or so? And the other one, and we can use any ingredient you can imagine, and that there's this little places to put it. So, uh, Carlton, uh, went to, he found a place that would sell fifty pound bags and had a, uh, different like sewing machine, and, uh, so they put up a two bags of feed and, and I don't know, the word got around that they could get poultry feed there, ramp of formula. And, uh, two of them, uh, got it, it liked it, it really got good production from it, like we always did. And, uh, so it got, golly, I don't know how many bags you sell a week, but it just, we never advertised it, just, uh, just all come in and, uh, it was thousands, thousands of dollars from it, uh, this nonprofit. Most of it is because, uh, there's no middleman in between. So, uh, well, that led to a problem of too many people in the yard, or whatever. Had to spray all the wheels on the vehicles, all that sort of stuff. And, uh, so, so while they were, started doing this hay business, straw business and all, and they didn't have room to store all that, so they thought, well, maybe we can buy the two and, uh, store the aid straw in one building and use one end of it for the beach store. And that's why this all came about. And, uh, we, we're strong believers in agriculture, our family. Uh, both sides of my family, uh, have always been into town and, uh, except for a brief period. And, uh, Carlton, through research, found out he was my fifth cousin.
That wasn't a joke for the record.
So anyway, uh.
I thought you were abstaining.
I didn't want.
Thank you.
But, uh, we believe in agriculture, as I've told many people, all I ever wanted to do was be a farmer. And, uh, so, that's why, that's why it came about is, is, uh, this. Well, I would say.
It's a crazy business though, Roy, you know, you couldn't give the eggs away during, everything was shut down.
Yeah.
Now they're so expensive, nobody wants to eat them. Now they're so expensive, nobody wants to eat them.
Yeah, I know.
They'd rather be back down.
And that's that's where the feed development came from is we needed to diversify since we were living two hundred thousand dollars a day. With our production, so now it then it developed into something more than just. So.
Most people don't know you can't turn the chickens on or.
Best customer, Joe, is that buy eggs and chicken feed.
So there's still. But I think here, uh. We're gonna have the code and sign making sure that we're covered. Because of them, like the food package, buying other things and bringing in, it's more than just what they are producing, the. Um. I'll find for a farm business overlay zones over that. Covers that store.
It's probably incidental.
But just be sure that um you are in an egg district. Members, egg districts, okay? Um, see it more than ten thousand dollars in component and it's on farm. So it's the three parameters are met, so there's no problem with that. So. Um.
You better be over ten thousand.
Yes.
Trouble with that many chickens.
And the little bit of history that. I grew up on a poultry farm and when my dad retired. Profit was a fraction of a cent per dozen. You got out of that business, so. And Roy is one of Roy and family, one of two farms left in Anadog County with poultry. When I grew up, there was eleven. Wow, so. So kudos to them and keep it going.
I think there's maybe ten in the state. That are considered commercial like us.
Yeah. Yep. Any other comments on it? Otherwise, check with uh. B R for the driveway. Um.
Good presentation. You came well prepared.
Yeah, Monday I'll just start construction.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
We hear from you.
Yes. Public hearing next month.
Yeah, so as the rocks aside, I think the idea is as soon as. The approvals are granted through guys, the only other one we had to get was County Health Septic System, which we already are in receipt of. So once we get through this, then I think they wanna start construction to be operational by fall, right?
Yeah. There will be touch with the. Butter and neighbors within thousand feet that have certified now to go on those land and stuff. Australia. What we've done is appreciate it. We're hearing next month on the.
We don't see any changes on the that.
They might be shorter. We could put them first. You. You know, it can take a longer. It says change. Hope that you guys first. The agenda.
Farmers, they get up early. They need to be.
Thank you.
Thanks for sending out from the board to the board. My favorite.
Alright, alright.
Hi, thank you, everybody.
Not a big one, no.
No, you didn't have.